This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
I mean, there is seven seats here.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You caught us in mid-conversation here. Welcome to our November Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frida, North Haven's first selectman. Joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the very public who always stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comment to the agenda? All right, item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from October 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second Sally's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will dispense with item number four. I'll have more updates on the overview next month. And we'll move to number five, Sally Buemi. Ms. Buemi has asked for a discussion topic. Sally, the floor is yours.
Yes, okay. I know we have a bit of a time constraint. We started early tonight because you have a commitment later, so I will get through this as quick as I can. I was unable to attend the Board of Finance meeting last couple of weeks back. I think it was the third one I missed in 10 years. And that's when the budget-making schedule was discussed. And so I had gotten, of course, the information in my packet that the Board of Selectmen members get prior to every Board of Finance meeting. And I'm concerned about the referendum being the day after the annual Budget Town meeting. Now, I understand perfectly well that the annual Budget Town meeting, by charter, must be the second Monday in May. In fact, a few years ago, we had it wrong on the calendar, and I had noticed that, and we fixed it. We can't change that. The annual Budget Town meeting has to be on the second Monday of May, which is May 13, 2024. But, and then you have the referendum the next day, the 14th, with the Board of Finance meeting Wednesday, the 15th, which is where they set the mill rate if the referendum passes the budget. So I'm going to give you two reasons why I don't think this is a good idea. One is why we shouldn't have the referendum the next day, and one is why I think we can't because of statute 7-7. The first thing I just wanted to give you guys is a sample. This was last April's agenda of the Board of Selectmen meeting, where we called the Budget Town meeting, and of course, the call contains the adjournment to referendum. So this was just this past year. And this was from our April meeting, where we called the annual Budget Town meeting for Monday, May 8th, which for 2023, that was the second Monday. But you'll see that we pursuant to the third item on the agenda pursuant to section 7-7, we don't vote on the -- this is just to help the folks at home, give them a background. We don't vote on the budget, at the Budget Town meeting. We adjourn the town meeting, and we have a referendum. And it's typically eight days later. Like in this case, it was on May 16, eight days after the Budget Town meeting. And then the Board of Finance met on the 17th. So that's how it works, folks. We have our Budget Town meeting. We don't vote on it. It gets adjourned to the referendum that you're all familiar with, and it's always been eight days later. And I think it should be eight days later for the following reasons. First, especially in recent years, there's been significant changes in the budget that's presented at the Budget Town meeting. That budget changes quite significantly from the one that's presented in the April public hearing. And that's been true, especially in the past few years. Wouldn't you agree? The Board of Finance meets in mid-April after the public hearing, which takes place in early April. And the theory is they could make changes based on what they hear. Also, we make a lot of changes based on new information. New updates on revenue sources, updates on claims history for insurance, which is a big line item in our budget. So changes have been happening, I think, more frequently for lots of reasons. So the budget that is presented at the annual Budget Town meeting is usually quite different from anything that the folks have seen before. And if they have to vote the next day, you know, this is scheduled for 2024, the Budget Town meeting again for 7:00 on Monday, the 13th, and you and the superintendent present the budget. That meeting pretty much goes to like 9:00 that night. So nine hours later, 6:00 in the morning on Tuesday, the 14th, we're scheduled for the referendum. Nine hours, I don't think, gives our voters enough time to learn about the budget. Certainly, if they didn't make the Budget Town meeting, they can't watch it on TV. If it's eight days later, there's plenty of time for NHTV to run the meetings. There's also plenty of time for newspaper coverage about the proposed budget, which also serves as a way to advertise that the referendum is coming, and it gives you the opportunity, and perhaps me, the opportunity, to talk about the budget. Sometimes I write a column about the budget. You've been writing a column recently. So having the referendum nine hours, starting nine hours after, at 6:00 a.m., when the voting begins after the town meeting, doesn't really give the folks much of a chance to learn about it unless they were able to go to the town meeting. But I think we, as the Board of Selectmen, we're the ones that called this and set this rule for adjournment. We have an obligation to give our voters, especially in this form of government, where the voters are the legislative body, the opportunity to educate themselves about this budget that may have changed quite dramatically. So that's why I think we should have it eight days later. We can't change the Budget Town meeting, but we could certainly change the Board of Finance meeting. We almost changed this meeting tonight, last month, because of your schedule. We could have changed it, but instead, we changed the time a little bit. So we could definitely change the Board of Finance meeting by a week. So that's why I think we should do it. Also, before I came here, I Googled -- yeah, you can Google anything. It's amazing. I put in, "When was the last year?" May 13th was a Monday. And it came out 2019. And where did I put? And Val was nice enough to give me a copy of the agenda from our April 4, 2019, meeting. And sure enough, we called the annual Budget Town meeting on Monday, May 13th. And lo and behold, our referendum was Tuesday, May 21st.
Okay, well--
Do you want to hear why I think we have to?
Good, yes.
Okay. 7-7. And I -- Mr. Denofield might disagree with me, but there's a copy of 7-7. And I had Val tell you guys I was going to bring it up. I didn't want to hear any allegation, "Oh, we didn't have notice of this." So that's why I let you guys -- Bill?
No, I appreciate you doing that. So that we could have--
We don't want anybody plugging their ears.
You guys did a great job in judging pumpkins Saturday. I came right after you left.
Yeah, what did you think? We had fun. We can talk about that later.
I liked Vinnie vomit, that pumpkin. That was a good--
Yeah, that was a really good one. That made the top three.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
We agreed, though, I mean, on the top three.
Yes. Yeah, we could talk about the pumpkins. That was great. But 7-7, and that's why I started with showing you, you know, the call from a few months ago, because it references 7-7. And 7-7 talks about the town meeting and when it could be adjourned to a vote by ballot, in this case, a referendum. And it gives you two ways that it could be done. And the first way is by 200 people. It says 200 or 10% of qualified voters, whichever is less. So for us, that's 200. 200 people can petition the clerk for the town in writing at least 24 hours prior to the meeting, requesting that an item on the call be submitted to a vote. Okay? So that's one way. The folks themselves can do it. And it goes on to say, "On a day --" So these 200 people could submit a petition for a vote to have an item submitted to a vote by a paper ballot, not less than seven nor more than 14 days thereafter. So when the people petition to have an item go to a paper ballot, it has to be at least seven days, but not more than 14 days after the meeting. Then it goes on to say the other way that this could happen, and it's the way that we do it. And if you go down further, where does it start? Hold on a second. This is a different copy than the one that I was reading from, so it's got bigger print. Hold on. Oh, here. Nope, that's not it. Let me look at my copy, because I think I marked it.
Because I think it does say like--
Okay, I got it.
After that, Sally, it does say like, seven nor more than 14 days if 200--
Yeah, here, I have it. It says right here, "With the polls not earlier than 6:00 a.m." Then it says -- so I want you to be with me here. You see where it says that the polls opening not earlier than 6:00 a.m.? Then it says, "The selectmen of the town," that's us, "not less than five days prior to the meeting, on their own initiative, can remove an item on the call of such meeting for submission to the voters." And here's the key phrase, "in the manner provided by this section." Well, what is that manner? Well, it's right up above. Not seven nor more than 14 days. So I think that no matter which of the two ways it goes, "it" meaning the vote of the budget, no matter which way it gets adjourned to a referendum, either by the people petitioning for it to be adjourned or by us, which is how we've been doing it, by our own initiative, calling it to go that way, either way, it has to be at least not less than seven nor more than 14 days thereafter. I can't imagine the statute, even though it doesn't repeat that seven or 14 days, when it talks about the selectmen, it says "in the manner provided." So I can't imagine why the legislature, in their collective wisdom, would say, "Hey, if you adjourn to a referendum to vote on something by petition, it's got to be seven to 14 days, but not intended for the Board of Selectmen." So I would be happy to discuss this with town council, but I think it's pretty clear that we must do it. We always have done it, which 2019 shows. That's how we did it in 2019. The other year where May 13th was the second Monday of the month was 2013. I didn't have time to look up. It was in the archives, so I couldn't find it. But in 2019, when we had the same date pattern, we waited until the 21st. I gave you the argument why I think we should. So I'd like you to think about it and talk to Jeff. I think we have to.
I think, though, you're not selling, and just purely, and you know, and I understand like the practical reasons or whatever. But if you look at the language that you just read,
Sure.
You know, with the 200 person, 200 or more persons, you know, seven or 14 days is the -- But then the second half of the sentence, "Or if the town meeting does not set a date by the town selectmen for a vote by paper ballots or by a yes or no vote on the voting machines." So by us setting the date, we can set the date as the day after the town meeting that the referendum could be set by that second half of the sentence. We don't have to wait those, you know. And I'm not trying to debate whether maybe we should wait those days. We don't have to wait the seven or 14 days because of the second half of the sentence.
Okay, so it says -- hold on. Yeah, wait a minute.
"If the town meeting does not set a date by the town selectmen for a vote by paper ballots or by a yes or no vote on the voting machines."
Yeah, that's about the time. I don't think it's about the date. So let me just go back and so I--
So we could set the date--
Requesting that any item items on the call of the meeting be submitted to persons qualified in such meeting not less than seven nor more than 14 days thereafter on a day to be set by the town meeting. Or if the town meeting does not set a date by the town selectmen. But I still think the town selectmen have to select it between the seven and 14 days.
No, it's only if the 200 person do that. That's an "or" situation. See, and then the other sentence you read--
I disagree with that.
The selectmen of the town may not less than five days prior to date remove any item. There's only one item that we're going to vote on on the referendum. It's yes or no on the budget.
Right.
So we're not removing anything.
And the five days comes into play, because that's the rule for when you notice something. It has to be five-- The five days is because we have to notice, you have to have five days notice, so you can't change the agenda is what that's trying to say.
So what is your other point about the selectmen? I want to try to understand your point, Bill.
Well, it says the selectmen of the town may not less than five days prior to the date of any such meeting or their initiative. Remove any item. We're not removing any item.
It says, "Remove an item on the call of such meeting for submission to the voters." That's exactly what we're doing. We're adjourning the meeting--
No, but we're not removing an item. There's only one item on the agenda, which is to vote yes or no on the budget.
Yeah, and we remove it from the agenda every year.
Well, but again, we're setting it-- but we're setting the date--
I think they remove from the call of the meeting. In other words, the actual meeting, the call of the meeting.
All right, can I sum it up?
Sure.
But, you know, I think, as opposed to even the language there, I think the other issue is the one of practicality. I think that you're making the argument--
So maybe my argument of why we should is stronger than my argument of why we must.
So let me sum it up.
Yeah, and again, it's a good example of how some of these, as you know better, being a lawyer than any of us.
This is--
It's pretty badly written.
This is an awfully written statute. It's horrible.
It's pretty badly written. I was looking--
I'm going to say crappy.
I was looking at the--
On live TV.
I was looking at the history, too, and you know.
Yeah, I read it.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, can I sum it up?
Please, please.
So we had the town attorney look at the statute. It's arcane and nebulous. He thinks there's no illegality to it. But you've made a convincing argument tonight as to why we should do it. So I think what we should do is we will think about it. Like, you know, at the next Board of Finance meeting, make sure the Board of Finance is aware of it and that they adjust their schedules. And then I've got no problem with it moving on.
I appreciate that consideration. I think it's a smart move. And again, we have that obligation to give folks the opportunity to educate themselves before they vote. It's up to them to take advantage of that opportunity that we provide them.
You know, I think, when I said you made a convincing argument,
Yeah.
After Val showed me your email, my first reaction was, well, maybe by having it the way it is, that the people attending the meeting would be more inclined to go out the next day to vote rather than have the eight-day hiatus, which may, through distractions, may diminish turnout. But I think you made a good point about the eight days after the North Haven TV. The people then may not have attended the meeting. So your argument's a good one.
Yes.
Okay, so--
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
I think we'll talk about it next month after our Board of Finance meeting.
But, you know, and I just want to say one more thing. We're going to get you out of here in time just for a little historical reference. We didn't always decide our budgets by a referendum.
That's right.
When I served on the Board of Finance, I was elected in 1985, and I served for four years. We had the annual Budget Town meeting on the second Monday of May, because that's what the charter said. And we voted on it right there at the Budget Town meeting.
That's right.
And the Board of Finance members attended the meeting. It was at the high school, formerly the East Campus Auditorium. And then after the conclusion of the annual Budget Town meeting, and it always passed, the vote was taken, we would get in our cars and drive here, the Board of Finance members, and come right here and vote and set the mill rate. Done. And I just want to, because we're having this discussion and we have time, I just want to say that there was a citizen. Her name was Ann Rocco. And she formed the North Haven Taxpayers Association, and she was president of that association. And she figured out that the people had a right to petition to force a vote to a referendum. And once that happened, we never went back. So for all of you, you know, I talked to a lot of people, just like, not as many as you, but I talked to a fair amount of folks. And they're like, "Well, you know, sometimes I want to come to a meeting and say this or that, but who am I? I can't make a difference." And I'm going to honor Ann Rocco right now because she made a difference in this town. And you can make a difference if you care about something strongly. And she cared about it. And she changed the way this town did the most important thing that we do, which is pass a budget. And so I just wanted to mention that for a little historical reference. Our very first referendum in '91, we had 5,000 people vote. And back then, there were only about 12,000 to 13,000 registered voters. Not because there were so few less people. We just didn't have as many registered voters. So I think all that hard work she put in to forcing the budget to a referendum vote, I think she'd be very sad to see that we're averaging 600 or 700 people out of 17,000 now. So, but anyway, I just wanted to share that little piece of history and how one person made a big difference in our town. So thank you very much for allowing me to do that.
So you're right about Ann Rocco. You know, when I first took office in '09, I got to be very friendly with Ann. Her days were behind her as president of that association. So I went to visit her several times. And one was when her husband, Tony, got sick. And she was very proud of that, what you just said. Very proud of the impact that she made in changing the way this process went back then.
And it trickled to other towns as well. She didn't just change the, you know, business of North Haven. She had an impact on other towns. So I thank you for acknowledging the merits of my argument. And you'll think about it and check with your Board of Finance members. And perhaps we'll do it the way we should. Thank you very much for allowing me to put this item on the agenda and so we could move on.
All right, and by the way, folks watching on TV, Sally referenced, and Bill's mentioned it, I have another event after this. It's a huge event. North Haven residents are being honored. I promised I'd be there. So my timeframe is shorter tonight, but Bill and Sally will be here also if the beating does go a little bit longer. So item number six. Who would like to take that?
I'll do that. We're going to -- I'll make a motion, resolve that the town of North Haven has authorized the auction and disposal of the following surplus public works, equipment, and vehicles. The Director of Procurement and Administration, Richard Monaco, is authorized to determine acceptable bids, bid offers, and to take said equipment, vehicles to alternate auction locations. All revenue received will return to the town's general fund. I have to read these? Val?
I think you can just reference the items--
Okay, I thought last time we -- About six months ago, we had a long list of some strange public works items, and I think I thought I had to read them.
I'll leave it up to your discretion.
I think that I will make reference to the 12 items listed in the agenda. So I'll make that resolution as read.
Well, Dan, none of the items are particularly new, at least in terms of the vehicles, in 2011 and 2008. So I don't have any problem with that. And I'll second Sally's resolution that these items, you know, be sold at an acceptable bid offer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Bill?
Item number seven is resignations and appointments. I'll motion to accept the resignation of Teresa Ranciato Beely, formerly of 100 Bassett Road, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire November 30, 2025.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. End of discussion. I'd like to thank Teresa. Teresa, if you're watching, we have a lunch date set. I look forward to having that lunch with you and personally thanking you once again for all of your years of service. So with that being said--
Yeah, I would just like to say, to thank her for her many years on planning and zoning. It's a very time-consuming board. They do a lot of research with their site plans that come before them. And some of those meetings go well past 11:00 p.m.
Yeah.
You know, for a volunteer board like this, it's very time-consuming and just crucial work to ensure that our planning and zoning regulations are complied with. So I thank her for her many years of devoted service on a very challenging board.
Also for, you know, all her involvement with the town meetings.
Yes, she was our moderator, quite often.
She did a lot for the town. I think it's worth noting that the reason why she resigned is that she did move out of town.
Yes.
Yes, yes, very good.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, I think we voted on that. Okay.
Aye, yes.
All in favor, I think aye.
Sally's next.
Yes, we have the appointment of Jennifer Caldwell, 69 Kimberly Circle, to the Commission on Aging, to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Vilano, who passed away, term to expire December 31st, 2023. I reviewed Ms. Caldwell's resume. She has a lot of experience that would serve her well and serve the Commission on Aging well, so I would urge her appointment.
I'll, and I'll, based on that nomination, or I'll approve her appointment or second her appointment. So I would agree.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? End of discussion. I'd like to say, Mr. Vilano's family's watching, for those that don't know, Mr. Vilano passed away, and he served many years on this, on this commission, and he loved it. And I thank you, Phil and Taryn, if you're watching, his son-in-law and his daughter. He was a wonderful man. I knew him and his wife, Joanne, for many years, even before I took office. So we thank you for allowing him to serve the town of North Haven.
Yes, he also served on ZBA, another quite demanding board.
So all those in favor of Mrs. Caldwell?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Number eight, I'll make a motion to approve the property, oh, excuse me, excuse me. I have to recuse myself. I have a conflict here. Sorry.
All right.
So you two will have to do this.
All right, Bill?
I don't have any, I did review it like you do every time, Sally, and I don't see any conflict that I believe I have. So I'll make a motion to, all of which are relatively small amounts, the property tax refunds that I think should be made to the list that's been provided.
All right. There's a motion. I'll second that. Any other discussion, Bill?
Nope.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you'll note that I have a professional conflict, so I have to recuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine, the next regularly meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, December 7th at 6:30. But Bill and Sally, I wanted to let you know that I met with Rabbi Hecht, Chirmin Katz, and we're going to also be doing the menorah lighting on the green. And originally, it was scheduled for 4:30. Rabbi Hecht asked me, Rabbi Hecht is a North Haven resident who oversees a synagogue on Whitney Avenue in Hamden. So the rabbi asked me if we'd consider moving it to 5:00 p.m., which I agreed to do. So the ceremony will last about 45 minutes. I'm arranging publicity with the North Haven Courier. I anticipate a larger crowd this year. I am making arrangements to have police presence there in light of what's happening in the world. So I wanted to just let you both know, you're invited to come.
Yes.
And then from there, we'll walk over here.
Yes, yes, I've attended it. Last year was great. They had all the candy. The fire truck was there. It was great.
I don't think we're going to do the fire truck this year. The rabbi even said maybe we don't need that, but he is planning to come with the treats.
Good.
So.
Okay.
All right, so that's the next regularly scheduled meeting. We're at item number 10, public comment.
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, One Crispy Drive. So first of all, I'd just like to thank this board for your bipartisan cooperation in making what I consider to be very reasonable scheduling changes, both for the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight, in order to accommodate Mr. Frida's constraints and starting it just a little bit early, but also in your open-minded consideration of the possibility of changing the referendum date, as well as making a proposal that we have a special Board of Finance meeting a little bit later. I think that this will allow time for the people of North Haven to make informed decisions at the referendum. So I thank you all for that. Secondly, I just had a quick question regarding the list of items that will be sold, both the public works, vehicles, and equipment, and it said that the revenue from these sales will go into the general fund. I just wondered, where in particular on the budget will that revenue be reflected?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we think there's some value to this. And for those watching, what we try to do is sell off the antiquated equipment, put the money in the general fund, and then there've been years that we may have used that money for something else. But I'm going to say that right now, although it may change, it'll go into miscellaneous revenue in terms of the revenue work.
I wondered about that, yeah.
That's probably where it'll be, but we'll identify that.
I wasn't sure whether this was, whether sale of public property is exclusively real estate, or this could fall under that, or it's also been a miscellaneous as another-
I'm going to have to check that to make sure. It's either one of the two, though.
One of the two. But it's always good to have a good sense, because that would probably represent a little bit of a blip. So, and then last but not least, and you'll probably all address this, but I would just like to encourage all registered voters to please come out and exercise their right to vote. On November 7th, the polls open in all five polling places at 6:00 a.m. and are open until 8:00 p.m. And I encourage everyone to come out, and this is your way to really express yourselves and also exercise what, what everyone on this board believes is our duty as well as our right. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sally and Bill, would you like to make a comment about the voting? We encourage everyone to come out and vote.
Please vote.
In the, I think it's posted online now, the ballot.
The ballot, yes.
You know, if you go to the town of North Haven site, you can see the ballot in advance.
Yeah, I wrote to Jim Carew, and I asked him, could you please, and I gave him the link to the, to the state, to the state link, and so they had it up later that day, which is great.
If you go to the state site, you can see for every municipality-
Absolutely.
-that our, that our town clerk has submitted. But yeah, it's good to see that, if you have any questions, to go along with, you know, your comments. And all the election, all the, all the polling places will be open like they always are at the different, different schools and, you know, so nothing unusual about where people can vote based on where they voted before.
Absolutely. But I think it's always useful for the people to be able to see the ballot-
Right.
-because it's, it's not intuitive-
Exactly that, yeah.
-and you really do have to read very carefully for each and every position, you know, what are the instructions? Vote for one, vote for two. In some cases, there are three, you know, four people voted, you know, running for three positions. So I think it really is worth taking the time to go to the Registrar of Voters, Voters section of the town website, and I think it's under New Events. When you click on that, you go to the very bottom of the screen. There's a hyperlink, and it says Sample Ballot. So anyway, okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none?
Well, I just wanted to make a couple of just little announcements. Well, first, you know, you mentioned the pumpkin carving. Bill and I, I'm sure, want to just thank everyone that entered the pumpkin decorating party, and we wanted to thank the garden, I think it was the garden club that put on the competition. It was a great event on the green. I wish more people were there to see these tremendous creative works of art. So that's kind of like the happy note. I also want to, and I'm sure you'll join me, Michael and Bill, remind people, you know, it's leaf, leaf raking time, and I'm already starting to see huge piles of leaves on streets, rather than, you know, we have an ordinance that says that they have to be on the edge of your property. It's just, you know, especially on some of the narrower streets, if you have two houses across from each other, and they pile the leaves on the road rather than at the edge of their property, it just makes car traffic difficult, pedestrian traffic difficult, biking. It's just dangerous. And doesn't this leaf pickup go into December? I mean, yeah, there could be a snowstorm, and then the plowing just becomes a problem. So if you could join me, Michael, in encouraging people to follow the ordinance and put their big piles of leaves on their property and not on the street.
So this is a good point, comes up every year. So there is an ordinance, and some neighbors complain about other neighbors, and the mechanism is the police department gets involved, or the public works. Sometimes it's a combination of both. So the way to do this, ladies and gentlemen, is the leaves go at the curb, not into the street. And it's very simple. And then our people, and we're the only municipality that does this, the only municipality, we pick up loose leaves. We don't ask the residents to bag them and pay the money for the bags. No, nobody else does this. It's a tremendous cost for us, a lot of labor, but it's a service that people like, and we're going to continue to do it. But we need your help, as Sally said. Please keep the leaves off the street, at the end of your front yard, at the curb. That is the way to do it.
I think a lot of people used to put it in the street because they didn't, you know, when, when the leaf rakers would come by, you know, they would rake and leave like some remnants of the leaves on the lawn. Now they're using the, they wear the blowers. So they're going to clean it really well. So that reason, no, really, am I getting a little too, but this is the reality, that people worry, well, then I'm going to have all these leaves still there, and oh, no, you know. They'll do a great job cleaning the five or six feet of your lawn where the leaves are piled. They will. I just, my neighborhood, there's lots of walking and bike riding, and it's a problem. You know, and I see, you know, God forbid, somebody, you know, a bicyclist, you know, juts around a pile of leaves, and there's a car coming, you know, there's not very much room. I see it as a very significant danger. So, you know.
The other, actually, I was out walking the other day, and I talked to, you know, and commiserated with the mailman for exactly the same reason, because, you know, he's trying to put mail in the box, and he's dodging leaf files, you know, which in some cases require that he, because he can't go over the leaf files, because with the mail trucks, they could get stuck under there and overheated. He said, "overheat is the mail delivery vehicle." So, you know, he has to stop, get out, you know, and it's going to, it actually delays the mail service as well. Because he, you know, he's used to riding along the curb and putting mail right in the box, and he may not be able to do that if the street is obstructed with leaves, you know, along the way.
That's a good point.
Yep, so that's all I wanted to say.
The other thing to mention, we won't meet again, is after election, the end of next week is also November 10th, I think, which is important to all of us. It's Veterans' Day.
November 11th is-
Yeah, it's Veterans' Day, the 11th, and the town hall will be closed on the 10th for Veterans' Day.
Yes, and I think we're having our ceremony on the green on the 12th.
On Sunday, the 12th.
Yes, I got an invitation from-
11:00 p.m.
Yes, yeah. They're doing it on Sunday, the 12th. So we're honoring, we have the 10th off, it's actually the 11th, but our ceremony is on the 12th.
Yep.
You had that date, right, Bill, the 12th?
I didn't get it yet, but I knew we were going to do something one of the, one of those days. So it's 11 o'clock?
11 o'clock, Sunday, the 12th, yes, Sunday. So.
Yes, Veterans' Day.
So we got a long, a three-day Veterans' Weekend with town hall being closed on the 10th, and Veterans' Day actually being on the 11th, and then us having our ceremony on the 12th.
Yeah. All right, very good. So motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All the, so is there a second? Bill, is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that. Just making notes on my calendar.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll see you next month at the December Board of Selectmen meeting. Have a good night, all those watching on North Haven TV.
This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.